Welcome, everyone. I am calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00. Please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
Official meeting notification. Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the Superintendent's Office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item B, roll call.
Medved.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Barney's here.
Loth.
Here.
Pollack.
Here.
Hagan Botham.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Motion, approve the agenda.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item three, reports. District Administrator update, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. We have a lot to celebrate this past month. As you know as a board, as our communication went out to all families, as posted on our district website, and then internal communication went out, state of Wisconsin released to the general public, state report cards for the 22-23 school year, so that would be last year. We did very favorable, we improved as an overall district by about a point and a half, and all of our schools exceed expectations on the rating scale, and Rockfield Elementary significantly exceeds expectations. We saw growth in student achievements and closing gaps in specific areas throughout the district. In January, Mr. Mizziak will come with a full assessment report of all standardized data, as well as a breakdown of the school report cards, what they mean, and what great work is happening in this district, and the work that our teachers are doing every day, as well as our support staff and our principals for kids.
Excellent.
Also, we concluded the fall sports season, winter sports season is beginning, and I wanted to recognize, and this is something we'll do throughout the year, I think last year, if you remember at the commencement ceremony at graduation, Mr. Barney read for about seven straight minutes all the state events that our student athletes participated in, so I thought as seasons come to an end, we can share at the District Administrator update, the great work that's happening and outside of the classroom in the co-curricular fields. So congratulations go to Finn Langley on winning the diving state title for D1 at the WIA State Swim and Dive Meet. Congratulations also goes to Izzy Barker, Abby Bruss, who is our Student Senate Representative, our Student Board Representative, Julia Saxum, and Kaden Kelly on winning the 200 medley relay at the D1 WIA State Swim and Dive Meet, and for breaking the school record for their relay by over two seconds. Additionally, congratulations to Cal Rediker on making it to state and cross-country, and to Samaya Fox on making it to state and cross-country as well. So we thank, recognize and honor those great student athletes. Additionally, the district should be very proud, and just two weeks ago, we won at the Wisconsin State Public Relations Convention, the two communication awards, an award of excellence for our monthly parent newsletter, and that was up against many communication submissions from school districts across the state, as well as we won an award of merit for our teacher appreciation project that was done by Ms. Race this last year, as well as our 4K registration enrollment campaign. So the communication efforts we see going out are being now recognized at the state level, and other districts are modeling towards that. And finally, happy Thanksgiving. We have a shortened week this week for students and staff. All students will be home starting Wednesday, as well as teachers and support staff, and we just want to say happy Thanksgiving and enjoy, enjoy the break and time with family.
Thank you. Item B, recognizing presentation, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. At this time, if our guests of honor and those accompanying them would come forward to the front, Mr. Medved will join you down there. This evening, we want to recognize four individuals who I shared last week, or two weeks ago at our last board meeting. We have four individuals here tonight, I think only three were able to attend in person, that were, showed heroic and brave actions in a moment of a critical incident at Kennedy Middle School. This evening, we want to honor Mr. Ben Shu, Mr. John Bell, Mr. Clinton Robey, and Mr. Frank Lord. They all worked with us as a school district in some capacity, and this evening, we're going to honor them with a plaque for their bravery and heroics during the critical incident. They were inside the building when the building went into lockdown, and they ensured the safety reacting to the drills that we do throughout the school district, throughout the year, and they utilize their knowledge and understanding of how to respond in a time of crisis to ensure that the community members in the building, the students in the building, and the other adults in the building were safe until the Germantown Police Department was able to sweep through and ensure that our kids could, and those adults in the building could be transported to MacArthur. So this evening, if you would give the awards to the supervisors. This evening, Ms. Guerin, would you please present Mr. Ben Shu, KMS teacher, with his award? Mr. Farren, would you please present Mr. John Bell, Germantown High School teacher, with his award? And Ms. Alton Dorff, would you please present Mr. Clinton Robey, GSF employee, and Mr. Frank Lord, supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, with their award? On behalf of the school districts, all I can say is thank you. Thank you for your actions that evening and your continued leadership in this school district. Board members, if you had anything you wanted to share this time?
Brian.
We were dealt an interesting situation, and everyone represented here tonight handled the situation perfectly. We never know when these types of situations are going to happen, and it was a completely random act that happened in our district, and everyone here handled it flawlessly and kept our students safe, kept our staff safe, and kudos to our police department and all our first responders. Everyone, I think, across the board handled this as well as you could under extremely high-pressure situation. Again, thank you. On behalf of the board, we honor what you did and really appreciate it. Thank you all for what you did and being in the right place at the right time, and fortunately, it didn't get a lot worse than it was. Thank you all.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. So today, we have four scholars from MacArthur Elementary. Similar to what we did last year, we shared a lot of writing with you guys. We narrowed it down to some of our second, third, and fourth, and fifth graders at MacArthur. We have a wide variety of applicants here, just wanted to show off their abilities and all the skills that they have learned throughout the last two years with their new writing curriculum. Teachers have been putting in the work, scholars have been putting in the work, and so they're going to share some of their personal narratives with you today. Right? So our first one is Ms. Trinity Putnam, who is our fifth grader, and start us off.
One, one day I went to the zoo. I was having so much fun when I got to see all of the animals. My favorite animal was the elephant. I liked them, but they are kind of big. I usually don't like big animals because if they're running, they might run into something if they can't stop. But my other favorite animal is a horse. I love horses. I've always wanted to ride a horse. When we were done looking at the horses, we saw pigs. I love pigs. They are so funny. I love when they play in the dirt. Right when I was about to sit down, there were dolphins. I love dolphins, even the gray color. We stand there for the talent show. When the talent show was over, I told my dad I saw monkeys. When we were done, when we were looking at the monkeys, they were eating bananas. They are so cute. I would want to have one as a pet. I got to hold it like it was calling me. It was so cute. When I was done playing with the monkeys, we saw cheetahs. I love them, they're so cool. If I was a cheetah, I would have so much fun. There were zebras and giraffes. The giraffes were eating leaves off of the trees. They also have spots like cheetahs. The penguins are so cute. I love how they swim and walk. I think they have to stay on wetland because they could die on dry land. My favorite thing that was outside was the butterflies because they, they were different colors. I like the blue ones because blue is my favorite color. Did you know that the mobile butterflies drink fruit juice? There were bears, I loved them, they are so adorable. One of them were eating grass. It was super funny. There were brown ones too, but it was super cute. I think there were killer whale sharks, but inside. The bats were so scary, but not the baby ones. My super favorite part was the play, was when you got to hold bunnies. But when we were done, it got a little warmer, so we got milkshakes. I got vanilla and my dad got strawberry milkshake. It was so good. I, it was so good. When we were done with our drinks, we went to go look at lions. My favorite lion was the dad one, but I also like the mom one. When we were done at the zoo, we went home. I actually do like big animals, but not small, duh.
Trinity, you can ask your mom to take you out for milkshakes afterwards, okay?
Our next person is Masha, who's a second grade scholar at MacArthur.
Title Pumpkin Seeds. First chapter Pumpkins, second chapter Pumpkin Goo, third chapter Counting, fourth chapter Eating. One day, Mrs. King said, "Let's count pumpkin seeds for my pumpkins." The whole class said, "Yes." "First, we need to open the pumpkins," Mrs. King said. "Chapter two, Pumpkin Goo." So we did. Mrs. King said to us, "If some of us do not like the pumpkin goo, do not get out the pumpkin So we started getting out the pumpkin seeds. I did not like the smell of the goo, so I tried to not smell the goo. Mrs. King gave us some shovels to get out the seeds. It was time to count the seeds. The pumpkin has 820 seeds. Then it was time to go home, I said to myself. "That's my best day ever." Next day, when we got back to school, Mrs. King brought, bring seeds that we got out from the pumpkins. We got to eat the seeds, they were so delicious. Bye-bye, school. Do you like pumpkin seeds?
And now we have our third grader Samantha.
One day on a Saturday morning, me and my mom and dad were just chilling. Then out of nowhere, me and my mom said, "Hey, do you want to go pick up something for your cousins?" And I said, "Sure, okay, but let's go." So I said, "So mom, where are we going technically?" And mom said, "To a house." An hour later. Then it appeared that we were in Waukesha, so I did, I asked mom one more time, "Mom, where are we going?" "To a house." "Uh, no, 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 no way. You're not serious, right? We are getting one of Al's brothers or sisters." "Yes, finally, I can get one of Al's brothers or sisters." After we got home, we let her feel at home, but then when me and my dad went to the store, my mom, uh, my mom, like Baby Coco Bean, we named her Baby Coco Bean, and let her out of my room, and let me tell you, it didn't go so well.
And Coco Bean was her new cat.
Lover by Grace Ketchell. Chapter one, introduction. Once upon a time, well, a lifetime, not a fairy tale, there lived a girl named Emerson, but she likes Emmy for short. She is a big Swiftie, like seriously. She blasted the music in a crack to mirror once, and she loves dogs. She is 10 years old and doesn't get a lot of attention because, well, wahhh. See what I mean? "Emmy, can you get the baby blanket and towel?" Emerson's mom said. "Emmy," she said for the second time annoyed. "One second," she yelled. As soon as her song was done, she ran out of her room, jumped on her blanket, and slid down the stairs, and then when the, and then jumped down when the stairs stopped. Then she grabbed a blue and white towel that had come in a set and was scattered with baby elephants all over, and they also smelled like they had been washed a few million times. "Can you hurry up, please?" Her mom screamed, bursting Emerson's thoughts of a dish soap bottle, saying, "Oh, dish soap, I will never let you go." "Sorry," she said, and went as fast as she could. Chapter two, throw up and bad news. By the time she got by her mom, there were about five yellow globs with food and spit in them. I'm not going to say what else was in there. Me, mom, and even the baby were silent for a moment, until, "Go up to your room right now, Emerson," her mom yelled, but not the loudest yell she had ever heard from her. Emerson obeyed her mom. She went right straight up to her room, but then she saw a light. "What could that be?" she thought in alarm. She decided to pull down the lever that was attached to it. Then stairs came down. Did she dare? If I was her, I would not, because once, my mom narrated, "This is not about you right now." "Okay, yish." So anyways, she did dare. She started climbing up the stairs as slow as a slug with lots of fear. She was shaking so much, she was worried the ladder would tip over. When she got up there, there were luckily no spiders or webs or creepy costumes. It was actually pink everywhere, which was good because she loves pink, like loves. There were beautiful rugs, a homemade map made by the kids who used to live there, and there were a lot of books and posters. There was even some ice cream cake and cookies in the freezer up there. Then she saw her dad searching up in the attic. "Oh, hi, sweetie pie, you scared me," her dad said, taking deep breaths, looking around to see if any other family members were hiding in the corners up there. "Sorry, Dad, and I know that look, it's just me up here," she said. Her dad sighed in relief. "Oh, good. Well, excuse me, I'm going to go back upstairs. Love you, sweetie, have a good time exploring up here." "Thanks, Dad, love you too," she said, as she went down the creaking stairs. She went over and took a look at the map the kids made. There was a tall-looking woman labeled Miss Hoffler next to the door to Emerson's house, but for some reason, she was around storm clouds and rain, and if you looked very closely, she had her mad face emoji mascot. Or wait, could that be her real face? Could she be mean for some reason, Emerson thought? "Emerson, come down for dinner," her mom yelled. She seemed in a bit better mood. "Whoa, she got over it so fast," Emmy thought. Chapter three, more bad news. A minute later, "Thanks for making spicy noodles," Emerson explained. "You're welcome," her mom said nervously, sweating like a really furry lion on a 100-degree day in summer. She quickly took a big bite of her food to calm herself down. "Millie, time for dinner," she yelled. "Mom, you know she never comes down." "Just leave it at her door," she said, kind of confused why her mom was telling Millie to come down. Just then, her mature older sister came down the steps. Today, she was wearing a pretty dress with gold at the top, and she was wearing diamonds and jewelries just to be a show-off. Sometimes Emerson secretly loved her outfits, but when she took a seat at the table, Emmy pushed her red long hair away from her face. "I'm surprised you came down," she said. "You never come down." "Yeah, no kidding, I was working on some really hard math, and at the same time, Madison is yelling at me for doing something I didn't do." And then she, hey, 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 hey. Before I go on, I should probably fast-forward this part because these drama stories last hours and hours and, yeah, so let's keep going. An hour later, "Well, you won't have to do with her anymore," Emerson's mom whispered to herself. "Huh? What did you say, Mom? They said?" "Oh, nothing." "Okay, fine. Do you know how you guys were excited about going to Pine Bark Elementary School, like you did last year?" "Yeah," they both said. "Well, this year you can. Dad got a new job today and we are moving to Germantown. That's why we've been packing up the house." "What? We won't know a single person there, not one," they both said, and madly stomped up to their rooms. Chapter four, moving. Next week, the next week, we are finally here. This trip felt like we were driving for hours. "Yeah, it did," she said, and they both laughed. After they unpacked everything in their new house, she went to find a friend. The school was within walking distance, so she needed to find a friend who could walk with her to school and play with her at recess. They were actually happy to move to the new school because it was really close to a really fun restaurant they loved, and that turns out, that's where they eat lunch. It was so cool. So anyways, she went out to find a new friend. She saw some people doing a lemonade stand. She loved lemonade stands. This had to be great luck. "Hey, what are you selling over there?" the neighbor yelled. That was probably her new grouchy neighbor, Emmy realized. It had to be. She came out of the house next door and went over to the lemonade stand. "Hi, Miss Puffer, I'm selling some ice-cold lemonade for $1 per cup. Would you like a friendly price discount of 60 cents?" she said, her voice trembling as the tall old woman stood over her. Everything turned gray all of a sudden. "If you want to hear more, please come to MacArthur Elementary."
Once again, thank you guys for allowing our kiddos to come and share some of their words with you. If you guys have any feedback for them, they would love it. Parents, thank you for the support in bringing your child here, and teachers for joining us as well. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you. I think we have some future writers and authors in our midst. You guys did an outstanding job. I can't imagine at your age, getting in front of a group like this with a microphone and reading our stories. Your stories are all great. Love hearing them. Thanks for sharing them. You guys, keep up the good work. I see a bright future for all of you because you're focused on your learning and you're doing a good job, and learning how to read and write is so important, and you guys are already well on your way. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you all for coming, much appreciated. I think one of my, one of my favorite things about being a board member is having these kids come in and speak to us and teach us about what they're doing in the classrooms. It's great experiences for us, appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to item four, citizen comments. We have a couple people tonight. First up, we have Lisa Van Zimmerin. Welcome.
Yeah, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barney wanted to-
Yeah, please, before you start, last meeting, we had some public comments that could be considered like attacks against other individuals. I ask that you keep the comments directed to the board specifically for items that we are taking action on or could take action on. In addition, please be mind, excuse me, mindful of our three-minute time limit. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Lisa Van Zimmerin. I'm a full-time teacher at Kennedy Middle School. I'm here representing the GEA. We have a number of concerns, would like to just share a few of them with you tonight. We are greatly concerned about the amount of staff that are leaving Germantown School District, and many of them are not leaving to work somewhere closer to home. They're leaving because of how poorly they're treated and how poorly they are paid. There are several vacancies and not many applicants, and we're wondering if the Personnel Committee is addressing these issues. We're also concerned about cuts to curriculum. The district made the decision to move away from textbooks in many areas, and yet we are being pressured to reduce our paper usage. The district also made cuts to several curricular resources like co-writer and snap and read, and we don't know why. We have yet to receive an explanation for the sudden removal of Brain Pop. When watching the board meeting, it looks as though the board made the decision to cut Brain Pop based on their own personal political viewpoints, but a school board is nonpartisan, so we don't think that could be the reason. We are concerned about upcoming changes to insurance. Vitality is being cut, yet we haven't received an explanation as to why. When you were figuring out the salary rates that you are, you will likely be imposing, did you take into consideration the significant increases that we will be paying for insurance? Please let me know if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, I'll take them back to GEA Leadership for follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Canodel. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm just going to go back to item three B, also here to recognize those that you previously recognized for the KMS incident, and for them performing their duties and seeing through the protocols that were in place. So I want to commend the Germantown School District for having those protocols in place, and for the individuals on your staff that carried out their duties in a very diligent fashion, and also to law enforcement that engage and work together with the school district so that we had a positive outcome, I would call it, of a very difficult, traumatic incident. And then further, that that has been recognized around the state of Wisconsin in my role as a state senator. I've had people, other legislators approach me and ask about that incident. I've had people, uh, other legislators approach me and ask about that incident. And, uh, I would like to be able to, uh, with your, your, uh, permission and public, uh, records to, uh, take the outcomes, uh, of that incident and share around the state uh, so that they, two other school districts, uh, can put in the proper procedures uh, that have worked here, perhaps if there's anything else that needs to be addressed. Uh, and security measures, specifically when it comes to future funding, uh, for this, the school districts that, uh, that there's something could have come forward there that needs to be addressed so we even have, uh, better, uh, procedures, uh, in place. Or if we need to fund other specific security measures, that we could take those into consideration. So I'd look to work with you, uh, in that regard, uh, going for, forward. And, uh, as a, uh, now grandfather with a number of grandchildren in the district and more on the way, I appreciate all your efforts that you, uh, put in to protect the students and the public in general. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Approval of the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Approval of teacher resignations. Uh, Mr. Noack, if you could just touch on those?
Sure. Um, in addition to the Jenna East Davis resignation that was brought to committee, um, earlier this month, there was a, um, recent resignation from Deb Reyer Young from Kennedy Middle School. That was a limited-term contract. Um, she made the decision that she didn't want to continue in that role.
Thank you. Item C, approval of teacher contracts.
Thank you. Um, in addition to the Carrie Kepke, um, uh, teaching position at MacArthur Elementary, which was brought to committee, we had two other, um, uh, limited-term contracts brought forward, to bring forward. First is Brandon Edwards. It's for a limited-term Spanish, uh, teaching position at the high school. Um, that is for ninety-three days at nineteen thousand five hundred seventy-eight. In addition, Christina Zick is a Kennedy Middle School Special Education teacher. That's a limited-term contract at, uh, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Again, both of those are limited term. We ask you for approval.
Thank you. And item D, approval of donations. Dr. Rutter?
Thank you. This evening, we have a number of donations. The County Line PTAs donating two thousand one hundred dollars and twenty-four cents towards the County Line Fifth Grade Field Trip Transportation, I believe, for Uppam Woods that took place. Germantown High School Class of twenty twenty-three is donating eight hundred thirty-four dollars and eleven cents towards our Greenhouse Courtyard Project. Amy Bell PTA is donating fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars towards, I believe that should say, interactive smart tele- display screens for Amy Bell. And Brady Corporation, five hundred dollars towards our Germantown High School Choir. And the Jeff Crowett Memorial Fund donated one thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-six cents for two pizza pretzel warmers for indoor concession stand at GHS and DSM, two hundred fifty dollars to, to the district in general.
Thank you.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second. Mr. Barney? Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Um, just for the record, that was over twenty thousand dollars in donations. That is unbelievable. Thank you to everyone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item six, Teaching and Learning Committee. Mr. Ewer.
Teaching and Learning met I'm sorry. Teaching and Learning met, uh, November sixth. Primary discussion was around the reading pilot. Uh, it continues as planned. We're looking to extend it initially under Act Twenty. The state was looking to have approval of the materials or, um, cr- the curriculum that would fit under that new Advisory Council's recommendations. And we don't want to make a decision on what we're pa- uh, going to choose until we know the final, uh, list. So we're waiting, we're not on pause. We're gonna continue the pilots as be and extend all three of them going forward until we know that final. All three seem to be on track with what would come out of a recommendation from that group. Uh, so we're pretty confident in that side, but obviously we're not looking to spend money until we know it will be on the list. The second topic was Dreambox. Dreambox is a, um, like an aid platform, learning platform that can assist in, uh, reading and writing as well as arithmetic. Given the pla- uh, pilots going on regarding reading, uh, we've opted to come forward with a recommendation around the math context of that site, um, solely. So with that, I'll bring a positive recommendation from the Teaching and Learning Committee to approve the purchase of Dreambox Learning Math.
Thank you. That comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. That's all I got for you. That covers it. All right, thank you. Moving on to item seven, Finance Committee. Mr. Loeb.
Yes, the Finance Committee met November sixth at the district office. We, uh, covered vouchers. Uh, there were a few questions. One that was interesting was, uh, was an expense by Dr. Reuters, and, uh, it was for an award for the best national high school. And, um, I had questioned that just to see what it was, and it turns out that it is a fee to use their logo. Interesting. So just because you get the award doesn't mean you get to use their logo. So just an interesting tidbit. Uh, full board item seven B. We covered Do the Math Tier Three Interventions K through eight. Um, that was covered earlier, I believe, in the same meeting, uh, in the Teaching and Learning Committee. And we, uh, the Finance Committee brings forward a motion to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the purchase of Do the Math Intervention Resources for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. That comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay, and board item seven C was laptop purchases. Uh, these lap- laptops will be distributed to elementary, uh, for each KMS and GHS, six each libraries for the purpose of substitute teachers and student use as needed. So the Finance Committee brings forward a motion to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation the purchase of twenty-eight HP G eight-six-zero G tens for twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents from Vanguard Computers Inc. as the winning bid for the RFP using Common School Library Funds.
Thank you. That also comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And that was it for Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Moving on to Personnel Committee. Mr. Ewer.
Personnel Committee met on, uh, November sixth as well. Uh, we had several reports from Mr. Noack in regards to teacher resignations, teacher contracts, and staffing update. I would recommend you view that meeting in its entirety to grab its context. Uh, we discussed in our consent agenda several of those. Uh, I would like to reiterate, we have that meeting monthly, and even though we're having it monthly, the situations change, staffing change, um, varies from time to time to the point where we can't keep up with it in that. So case in point, one of our hires was on that meeting's agenda for discussion and report, and then we had two more or three more, I believe, for tonight.
One resignation, two contracts.
Sorry, yeah, one resignation and the two contracts, but those were not on that policy. But the reason why we're having those is reports. We're not taking action in those meetings, but it is able, it's a, uh, vehicle for the administration to provide reports to the board or that committee and whoever would like to attend. As far as that committee's continuing actions regarding, um, staffing and other personnel matters, I'd like to point out the compensation study that's been ongoing. I believe we're, we've taken our outside data, information from surrounding districts and compiled it, and the next step would be an internal, um, discussion with staff, correct? So we'll be looking forward to move-
The first week of December, a survey will go out to staff to gather interest, and then from there, we'll select representation from years of service and buildings as well as different, um, disciplines of teaching.
I think the, the key to take from that is we're not, um, conducting this study in a silo. We're, we're using data from surrounding districts. We're going to use data from our internal districts. We're going to use our staff's, um, information they could provide us as far as how their experiences with working in the district can, can be affected by, uh, various items. So we'll continue to go through with that process. It doesn't happen overnight because we want to be thorough and collect as much data as we can before coming to a decision or preventing, presenting the full board with a decision to move forward. That's what I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, Policy Committee. Mr. Barney?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Policy Committee met last week Monday. Uh, the bulk of the meeting was covering twenty-three policy changes from Neola that comprised of seven new, fourteen revised, and two rescinded policies. Uh, I'll make note of a few of them. Um, our attendance policy is being updated to clarify the types of absences that require an approval, sorry, a written approval versus something that may be excused with a phone call. One of the new policies is an academic honesty policy. This policy deals with the impact of emerging technologies that make engaging in academic dishonesty more accessible, such as artificial intelligence. Uh, going along with that is another new policy specific about, specifically about artificial intelligence. Uh, Policy Fifty-Five Thirty is our policy about use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. This is updated to reflect the changing and expanding scope of drugs and derivatives that are becoming available. Uh, also in the packet is a new policy covering our Community Services Fund, Fund Eighty, which is something you hear about typically at the annual meeting. Um, and the committee decided not to bring one policy forward. That's Policy Twenty-Five Twenty-One, which talks about instructional materials and instructional equipment. Our committee asked for some clarification from Neola around some of their terminology, so we will bring that policy back in the future. That takes us on to board item nine B, the approval of modifications to district policies. Um, committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the updates and modifications to district policies as discussed, zero-one-zero-zero through ninety-eight-zero-zero-point-zero-one, with the exception of Policy Twenty-Five Twenty-One, which shall be tabled for further discussion.
Thank you. That comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
All right. Item C on the board agenda is discussion of proposed Policy Twenty-One Thirty-three class size. This proposed policy was introduced to the Policy Committee last week. It provides desired class-size guidelines across all grade levels for core academic classes and electives. The policy does state that the administration of board must balance the desire for small class sizes with the fiscal and space limitations of the district. There's no action tonight on this item, uh, so I will turn the meeting back over to President Medved, who can open it up for discussion.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Thank you.
If, if the board would like, um, this either can go back through Policy Committee for further discussion and possible action, or to the full board for a presentation, um, more in-depth if you wanted information. As I shared at Policy Committee, I did a three-year look back at attendance. We currently have a document that was not a board document. It was an internal document around guidelines. Um, so as, as, as this policy was drafted internally, there's consultation with, uh, Mr. Noack, Mr. Mizziak, and then our principals as well in providing feedback around the desired size of classes. Um, and then obviously looking at other considerations as well as performance-based classes, specifically music, as sometimes those are, a band wants to have more kids in it because you want multiple instruments, um, versus maybe a, an elementary classroom. Um, so I'm either, I'm at, at your disposal of if you would like this to come back through committee for further discussion and possible recommendation to the full board, or if it, to come straight to the board table. Um, and if there's any further information you'd like me to provide or present.
Yeah, I think the proper places in the committee, um, Policy Committee, I think, would be the place to handle it. Um, we do have this discussion every year when the new year begins, and we have look at class sizes and where, uh, different sections are gonna be. Um, not necessarily as far as extracurriculars so much, but I think that conversation should be had, and we can, you know, get more information and-
Yeah, this gives us, uh, desired sizes. So as we begin our staffing plan in January, after middle and high school students have applied and enrolled in courses for next year already, then we, that can help us flesh out what, as we start the high school staffing band plan down to the middle school and then elementary, which allows, do we need to increase FTE, stabilize, or possibly reduce staff? But then there's the, as you are full, fully aware as a board, we have summer move-ins. People come to the community, which they might migrate all to one specific area, boundary of an elementary school, which may need action by the board, as happened this past summer, to add additional sections so that our class sizes don't balloon. But we monitor the data of enrollment, um, from January on. And having actual desired si- class sizes allows us then to put those two pieces of data together to make a more informed decision.
Yeah, I think we've had, um, you know, policies and guidelines in place on class size for quite a while, um, but we have not looked at it in quite a while as well.
Or have a for- in our formal policy manual, there's a document that was created that's changed over time, but it's not been board-acted upon. That's public then to the community as well.
Exactly. Perfect. Mr. Ewer?
Just wanna ask for a couple things when we have this back in committee. So I, I can see the grades and grade levels and, uh, class size now. Can we get some context, some data around why we believe those are, or why the district would believe those are the right class sizes? Um, I'm just interested to see, uh, some form of reporting on that side of it between whether it's from staff and/or national data, local data, in regards to performance and class size.
For sure.
Mr. Loeb?
Are these the numbers that we've been using in the past?
I'm sorry?
Are these the numbers we've been using in the past?
It's fluctuated from year to year, school to school. Um, so that's why I'd like to see some consistency so that one elementary might only have two sections of twenty-eight kids at an upper elementary grade level, whereas another elementary has three sections with smaller class size. And we have to remember, we're four schools at the elementary level, so to build consistency regardless of what boundary you live in.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, Discussion and Action to Approve Health Dental Vision Insurance Rates for Twenty-Twenty-Four Plan Year. Mr. Noack?
Thank you. Um, we have with us tonight Michelle Frohke from R and R, who will be, uh, leading a presentation around our renewal for health, dental, and vision. As we lead into that, I would like just, I would just like to share, um, some things to, um, that are really important in this discussion. Um, trends, uh, at the state level and beyond relative to insurance costs and how they're increasing. That's a real factor in this discussion. Likewise, an extremely important part of this discussion is about experience rating. So she'll define what that is. Um, but in general, it comes down to the amount that we set for insurance being a hundred percent. Our current numbers through September around one sixteen, and by the end of the year, we'll probably be in the over a hundred and twenty percent. So there's significant concerns there relative to funding for insurance that drives some of the changes that we're going to hear about. Um, we're also going to hear, um, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, um, the difficulties of, of creating an insurance budget that meets these needs. As we move into the Twenty-Twenty-Four Plan Year, we're still waiting on, um, two different- As we move into the 2024 plan year, we're still waiting on two different rebates that could help our budget as well. We're exploring a pharmaceutical program that will give us potential, some cost containment in that regard, especially for our high-cost, high-claim pharmaceutical members. There'll also be discussion around the difference between self-insurance, being self-insured and fully insured. I want to make it very clear that this, this, the insurance situation that we're in has very little to do, if any, if, at all, to do with being self-insured. The reality is, in the summer of 2022, we were projecting an increase of sixteen percent to being fully insured in 2023. That would have continued going into 2024 as well, based on how we're running. So as we've gone through this process, the only other thing I want to speak to before I turn it over to Michelle is the timing. We're obviously, you know, late in the process, but there's no way around that. As we go through a first year of self-funding, because our data is, is and was somewhat immature moving through nine months of a plan, we were up against that kind of obstacle. Likewise, and Michelle will speak to, stop-loss insurance is a critical, critical part of being self-insured, and we literally in the last two weeks got that information. So we're in a difficult position that we don't necessarily want to be in, but it's a reality relative to timing, and we need to look to offer the best plan we can. With that, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Okay, thank you for having me back in. Just as a reset, because I wasn't here when the district had made the decision to move to self-funding, I just want to make sure that everyone's kind of on the same page with how this self-insurance works. So premium is what comes out of people's paychecks and what the district is contributing toward health insurance. So that's kind of money that's in a bucket. When you are fully insured, that premium just gets sent to an insurance company, so in 2022 it was sent to the WEA, right? And then the WEA is the plan administrator, they're the plan sponsor, they have the contracts, they are in charge of everything that has to do with any claims that are coming in. And then if those claims exceed what has been collected in that premium in a fully insured world, then the carrier then has an increase the next year. We always say your premium, your, your, your claims today are tomorrow's premiums. To, to, so to Mr. Noack's point, the pre, the claims from 2022 really were so excessive that the increase would have been about a sixteen percent, and that's a sixteen percent on that whole entire bucket of premium. In a self-funded arrangement, you still have a premium that the district is setting aside that, that employees are contributing, but then that money is staying with the district, and the district is then the plan sponsor. The reason, the benefit of self-funding is you can, as the district then, control the TPA, the third-party administrator fees. So in the case of the district right now, that's UMR. And you can control, or you have more control, over those stop-loss fees. So the money comes, the premium comes in, goes to the district, and the district then hires that TPA, that third-party administrator of UMR, to contract with the hospitals to pay all the claims. The district isn't seeing any of that, there's a, still that third party. But you have that control to say, which third party is going to do the best job for us? And then you also get to select that stop-loss vendor, that stop-loss carrier, who's going to be paying any of the claims that are over that, that threshold of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is probably the biggest asset that the district has going for right now. With the move to self-funding, in 2023, right now the stop-loss vendor is Symmetra, which we have up on that screen. For 2024, Symmetra suggested that they, because of the way the claims are running for the district this year currently, they wanted to increase the premium for your stop-loss by three hundred thousand dollars, just over three hundred thousand dollars. And so with part of that, that allowed us, as your broker partners, to go to market and find other stop-loss vendors and do some negotiations. So to Mike's, or to Mr. Noack's point again, we have to wait until the data comes in, and then go out to market and find what's the best option. By being self-funded at R and R, we were able to then come back and say, we're not going to stay with Symmetra as your stop-loss partner, but we're moving to a stop-loss partner called Sun Life. And instead of a three hundred thousand dollar increase, the district is not going to be seeing an increase when it comes to your stop-loss fixed costs, which is fantastic. So we have no increase when it comes to your TPA fees, and we have no increase when it comes to your stop-loss fees. However, we still do have the increase due to the claims, the general claim activity. So if you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So the district is going to spend, when we look at what the district contributes to the premium, and what the district contributes for HSA contributions to individuals and families, as well as paying for the claims for medical and prescription claims, just to, you know, note that the district is spending over four-point-five million dollars. Employees are contributing thirteen to twenty-three percent, depending on their plans and if they're singles versus families, to that premium, but the district is paying the rest. And we know that the district is responsible for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of claims for every single belly button on the plan. Now, when you're self-funded, you have that opportunity to say, okay, what can we do to make sure that some of those claims are not extreme? What can we do in terms of education, so people know where to go for some of their care? But it's important just to note that you, you have control over that TPA, which you took, you know, that we have with Sun, United, UMR, and then we made that switch to, from Symmetra to Sun Life. No one is going to have to change any doctors, because that TPA fee, we, we set it. And so there, it doesn't have to be changed. When you change behind the scenes with stop-loss, it doesn't impact an employee at all. They won't, it doesn't matter to them who the stop-loss insurance is. It matters to the district though, because with one stop-loss vendor, they can charge three hundred thousand dollars more based on your claims history. So if we look at the next piece, when we're talking about then claims going forward, trend in, trend in the insurance world is medical inflation. So it's kind of the news, it's the new set point, the new zero. So inflate, medical inflation starts at seven percent, and if claims are running poorly, then increases are over that. So when you're thinking about what are other school districts paying, or other employers paying, they're seeing easily, if their, if their claims aren't running well, over seven percent increases, over that. That's nationally. In the state of Wisconsin, our trend is a little higher, because in the state of Wisconsin, our hospital systems just charge more. We're kind of in just a geographic area where we are, where our hospital systems are more expensive. So trend in Wisconsin is anywhere from seven to twelve percent. And again, that's kind of that starting point, and if claims are running poorly, it's going over those numbers. If they're running well, then you're seeing lower increases. And it appears that in 2023, it, medical trend was between six and nine percent, but the district did not have any kind of increases for employees' contributions, for their portion of the premiums did not increase, that's six to nine percent. But claims still continue to come in. So with the concept of we have trend to account for and claims aren't running well, to, to Mr. Noack's point, we're at, I think that's on the next slide too, we're at a hundred and sixteen percent loss ratio. We were looking at what are employers doing to combat healthcare costs. And nationally, employers are looking at making some plan design changes. Fifty-two percent are looking at plan design changes. Thirty-five percent are increasing employee premiums. That isn't necessarily something that a lot of employers want to do or do by great amounts because of the concerns with staffing, just like you have had in a previous session today. They're looking at market, marketing. If you are a fully insured carrier and you market and you, or excuse me, if you're fully insured health plan and you have to market, that means going to a whole new insurance company and everybody getting a new ID card and potentially looking at a narrower network and having fewer providers. When you are self-funded, like you are, you didn't have to change that at all. We changed behind-the-scenes marketing and saved that three hundred thousand dollars. And then again, the nineteen percent are looking at pharmacy changes. So considering that, and where the district is running with your, your plan performance, your, just your year-to-date claims, we have more claims coming yet for October, November, and December here, but we have, we're already running at three-point-four percent, or three-point-four million dollars, and that's just in your claims. That's not considering what the district has already spent then in the premium and those HSA dollars. So again, I think it's very important to note that a major benefit of self-funding is going to have that ability to market and negotiate on a stop-loss, and that was a great success for 2024. The piece that we can't do anything about right now is that, the, the claims, the claims themselves for the members are, again, running at that hundred and sixteen percent. So considering where we are, they are, we're proposing some addition, some plan design changes, and also the, when these considerations were made, it was what are going to be the changes that would impact the least amount of people? So the changes that are your, the, the things that are staying the same would be your deductible levels. The deductibles, again, just as a reset for, for insurance, people like to use a lot of terminology, as your deductible is what you're responsible for. So the deductible levels would not be changing for 2024. If people have prescriptions, if they have office visits for specialty, if they go to the ER, urgent care, those, all those copays would be staying the same. The changes would be coming on the co-insurance. Co-insurance starts after deductible. So co-insurance doesn't impact people if they don't exceed their deductible. So it only would touch the people who are going over their deductible amount. So it's going, it would be recommended, and I know you have the form on this, from a hundred percent to eighty percent, which is really the national average. I mean, it's actually the, probably the most common co-insurance percentage. The out-of-pocket max, the only reason that increases is if you have these changes to co-insurance and you have the copays, it has a maximum. As a note, it's very, it's good to know that there used to not even be a, a maximum out-of-pocket. Out-of-pockets would just continue to grow and grow based on co-insurance and copays, but that changed with the Affordable Care Act. So the, the maximum out-of-pocket amount is like that worst-case scenario, so everybody knows what that would be. And then reducing the district HSA contribution by two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for single people, five-hundred dollars if you have two or more people, and then a slight increase to the rates. So when you looked at that other, I know you have the sheet that would lay out the different pictures of, of what the plans would look like, again, for deductibles. The majority, we did run a deductible and then out-of-pocket report with UMR to look at how many people are going to be impacted, and we're not going to say that, no one would, because that wouldn't be true, but there is not going to be, the majority of your employees and members would not be impacted by a change in that out-of-pocket max and that co-insurance. So, and going forward, again, to Mike's point, is we're going to continue to monitor the plan performance, and we've already taken that action to improve that stop-loss contract for next year. A very, very, very important piece to self-funding is getting people, everyone who's part of the, part of the program, to understand the importance of consumerism, both for themselves, most important in my opinion, for themselves, to understand where they can go for lower-cost care. And I, I'm not saying that people just don't know. Every place charges different amounts. Have people been educated enough to know where to find that information? So we're going to work on navigating that, you know, helping everyone understand where you can go for care, where you can find some coupons for your prescriptions and things like that. So that can really impact those claim amounts to try to reduce that hundred and sixteen percent loss ratio. We are evaluating a pharmacy benefit program that is going to benefit your employees and their family members for anyone who is taking specialty medications. So rather than paying your copay or your deductible amounts for your specialty medications, implementing a program where people can have zero-dollar savings, zero-dollar costs for their specialty, and then utilizing this program that will also save the districts some money. And then moving forward with a different wellness program for 2024. So, oh yeah. And the reasoning, when, when the district moved to self-funding, there was a, a grant that was given by UMR, the TPA, for, for a wellness program. It was a one-year incentive for the district, and that paid for vitality, and then that grant, which was, I think, twenty thousand dollar grant that was given, was, isn't provided going forward. So that we're looking, we have other wellness programming that will be unveiled in the new year. But with all the changes, we didn't want to have to muddy the waters too much with that, just letting everyone know that that was going to be coming in 2024. And just as an extra note, the dental and is, which is also self-funded, that's easy, it's running very well, so there's no changes in the plan design nor the rates. And the same can be said for the vision. The vision plan would have no changes going forward.
If I could just add, relative to vitality, from a historical perspective, we didn't always have vitality for some of the board members who've been here. You remember, we used to sort of do an in-house version of wellness. As we think about the cost of vitality relative to that twenty thousand, but then also the, the per-member fee that we pay, it's significant. And as we assess what we get out of it, and kind of what, how staff engage and whatnot, our, our driver, you heard us talk about consumerism, one of the drivers in wellness in the upcoming year and, and years beyond will be around developing kind of intelligence or developing a better background for employees relative to consumerism of being consumers of healthcare.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, can you summarize what the increase is for someone on a HSA plan? Single, last year versus single this year, and family last year versus family this year?
It is on the notes.
Yeah.
If you look on the notes, it would be under number four F. So a single person on the HSA would have an eight dollar and five cent per payroll increase. And then we're each shown there.
So that's where family is fifteen forty-five a payroll, and then the PPO is nineteen twenty-one for single and fifty-three oh four for family?
Correct.
And that's what we'll see deducted out of their checks, based off of their choice. Increase, not total.
The issue of the HSA came up earlier, and the reduction of that for family, twenty-five hundred down to two thousand contribution per the district. I just wanted to point out that in the area, I don't have all the figures, but I know that that two thousand mark is still on the high side of what districts are contributing. Michelle, you may be able to speak to that some.
Yeah, so the district, the district currently provides twelve hun, twelve fifty for a single and twenty-five hundred for a family. So now that would change to a one thousand, two thousand. The average is really six hundred dollars for a single and twelve hundred dollars for a family. State, yeah, instead, and you, you guys are still above that. Yep.
And those are dollars our district is paying for, not the employee, correct?
Correct, so that is being deposited into the family's HSA accounts. And that is their money to keep, that's the, I mean, HSAs are amazing, they're great. That's another big piece of consumerism, is getting people to understand the value of putting their own monies into the HSA, because it's, nothing is lost, and then those dollars can be invested, and even those investments... and even those investment dollars, I get kind of excited thinking about educating that, because you can really see the benefits.
It's not like a flex spending account where it sunsets every year.
Right. It, it stays yours. Use it as a retirement.
Now, last year, we, there was an increase, and I believe the board voted to absorb that and not pass it along?
Correct. Brittany, could you speak to last year, uh, at, this time we made board action to pay the 10% increase, I believe?
There was a 3.8% increase. Um, I believe the board was informed about that in October, around the same time. Um, so at that time, the, the district did decide to, um, absorb that and pay instead of putting it onto the employees. And I believe the year before, there was a slight increase, very slight increase to employees, and the district absorbed, correct me if I'm wrong, the balance of that as well, and from '21 to '22.
Yeah, it was, um, it was slight. Um, I don't recall specifically, uh, whether it was absorbed or not, but that increase was slight.
Anyone else?
So if the number of claims or amount of claims would go down at some point in the year, would they potentially see a, a decrease in the premiums at some point?
The premiums, when the premiums are set, those are set for, for a calendar year. Um, but the intention would be then to get that hundred and sixteen percent, if we get that, you know, under the hundred percent, then next year, to not have to worry about having any kind of changes in rates. Um, so there are the things that we can't control, that kind of the catastrophic situations in our, in, in the world that someone's having or has a heart attack or cancers, but there are so many opportunities to reduce those claims if people are educated, and, you know, we really work to take the steps, um, to do that. So throughout the year, no, there would not be a reduction. Premiums are set for the year.
Well, right for the year, but say when we come back next year, potentially if the, if there is a decrease in the number of claims, potentially would there be a decrease in the rate?
Yeah, um, it, uh, I think what you're talking about really relates to the experience rating, and that, that's probably the most important thing. That's what drives that hundred and sixteen percent, which will likely be higher that, but than, than that by year's end. Um, you referenced the number of claims. While it might not be specifically the actual number of claims, it's the amount of those claims. If we have, um, six or seven or eight very high claims, it can skew things dramatically, and that happens. Um, really, it comes down to the health of our employees on the plan, um, and, and, you know, relative to experience and, and how, how it ultimately impacts.
Are we collecting data as far as, and looking over the num, what the claims are so that there is a way of educating?
Yeah, that's actually, again, one of the great, best parts about being self-funding is you do get data. So that is something now, uh, that we have access to, that we have now joined you, um, as your partner on this. So yes, we're going through data to know what are some of those opportunities, and that even lends itself to the wellness. So we can see about diabetics, and maybe there's some programming we want to do around diabetes, because we know that diabetic, um, care is 2.84 times, someone with diabetes costs 2.84 times what a person without diabetes does. So that is, again, a wonderful thing about being self-funded, is you actually get that data so that you can make those changes. Um, and then going back to your question, would you see a reduction? We very seldom in any things see re, do reductions in prices. Um, if we, if everything went like crazy good, I would say so, but I would say the goal would really be to level things off. That would be ideal.
Well, and the understanding would be that there is some way to control the cost and, you know, how we, how we go to the doctor, when we go to the doctor, the things we go to the doctor for. So there is some personal, you know, way that people that are in the insurance program would be able to have some sort of, um,
Yep.
control over.
And we don't, we will not, as, uh, we edu, we believe in really strong education. You can't let people, just tell them to try to save. We have to let them know how to do it and where they can go and what are the tools and resources they have.
I think like one of the biggest examples I know of Ben presented with my old provider was an ER visit versus an urgent care visit and the impact that has. That's one of the simplest ones to understand, right? Um, but understanding where those urgent care facilities are and how to utilize them over an ER visit and why you would do that.
And I would just add, um, a, a very significant factor in all of this is pharmaceuticals and our, um, you know, high-cost claimants, and, um, part of our analysis is really targeting that, moving through. Um, maybe we have a much better grasp now of what that means to us, uh, its impact, and where we believe we can make a difference there.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed UMR options for health insurance coverage for the 2024 plan year and dental vision plans through Delta Dental and Delta IMed in the Germantown School District for the 2024 plan year, with all costs noted in the document provided.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Item B, discussion and action to approve the 2023-2024 budget. Ms. Altonorf.
Thank you. Um, in the beginning of the fiscal year, so in the months of June or July, the board was brought a pre, preliminary budget to approve. Uh, we do that because we cannot start spending payroll or accounts payable or perceive any money until a preliminary budget is approved. So, um, a preliminary budget, before a lot of information was known from the state level, was brought to the board for approval. We then had the annual meeting on October 23rd to approve the levy, which is, again, is a large portion of our revenue. Um, and then finally, we have to come after the annual meeting to get the budget approved. Um, we will have changes. Most likely, I will bring them in the month of January or February, because that's when we know our final grant amounts, because we're allowed to roll over funds from our grants. So this is the approval of the 23-24 budget in front of you, and then I will come back if there's any adjustments to that. If, for some reason, we would receive a grant, I would bring back, um, the budget for another approval. So in front of you, there's an attachment which shows the amounts that were given at the annual meeting, and then the amounts currently, and the only changes that were made were adjustments within the special ed budget due to, um, students' specific needs. So there were students' specific needs, and the accounting for that had to be put in different areas. But other than that, every other budget stayed the same.
Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question? Or do we want to go straight to motion?
We can do that after we read motion. Discussion should happen then, but.
Okay.
If you have a question, go ahead.
No, go, that's fine.
Make, make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 final budget as presented and adjusted the appropriate accounts identified as the adoption format, which was presented at the annual meeting for final submission to the Department of Public Instruction as required.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the second.
It's me.
Okay. Mr. Pollak with the second, Mr. Barney with the motion. Any questions, discussion?
Sure. Thanks. Uh, the budget was designed with the understanding of the increase in state aid that we would receive now up to 11,000 per student, correct?
Correct.
Do we know what that projected total was?
Between what we.
The, the increase, so from year over year?
Between last year and this year? With, it's based on enrollment? I don't have that with me.
Okay. Um, with those increased funds, um, if you could ballpark, are we talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions?
No. Uh-huh. So it's based on our total revenue, so it's, um, property taxes and state aid, those two together. That increased our overall amount we're actually allowed to collect. Um, so we were, I believe, at the approximate $10,500-ish amount. Um, we went up to the $11,000 amount, which is $500 approximately, um, but we did lose students. So, um, the math with that is a little more difficult, so I would, I, I don't want to put a number to it unless Jake wants to do math really good behind me.
Either way, there was an increase, is the ultimate point. Um, when those funds were decided to be distributed across all of our responsibilities to cover and fund for this district, do we know, was that distributed equally? Was that distributed with intention to a specific area over another?
It wasn't, I guess the way that the budget works is when we're building, I build the budget as an entire whole, um, so I don't look at necessarily specific areas. And then when I come up with estimated revenue that we're going to receive, which included the amount that you're s, talking about, um, then we work backwards on the expense side. That's, so that's why we do the zero-based budgeting process every year, where we work from zero and we work up to the amount of the revenue we're allowed to receive.
Cost increase would be reasonable to consider that they went up in all areas?
Absolutely. Contracts went up. We reviewed, again, as we did the previous years, every single contract and tried to renegotiate them. Um, some contracts are already in place, so those are contracts that we automatically built into the budget. For example, transportation has an automatic increase. Other vendors that we have multiple-year contracts, we spoke to them, but, you know, their costs were increasing as well, so they weren't changing the current contract. So those are built in right at the beginning of the budget if there's no, um.
Sure. So, so for example, if we went up 4.5%, I'm making that number up. I have no idea if that's what it is or is not, off the top of my head. Uh, we wouldn't then say we'll distribute a 4.5% increase across all funds. That's not how we would do that, right?
No.
Okay. Assuming that's because of cost fluctuations in all those areas.
Right. There's fluctuations with everything. For example, technology, um, reduced costs this year, so those funds then were able to move to another area which needed additional funds. So there's, I, I don't believe in across-the-board increases or across-the-board reductions. There should be reasons behind every decision that's.
Yeah, and I think we've seen that as we've, we've talked in finance and other areas throughout the year, uh, decisions being made at a finite level on each individual specific item, not just fund whatever is going to be decreased because we need to decrease it and you figure it out.
Right.
I, I can share that when Ms. Altonorf led us as a district through the budget process throughout last year, I mean, we got as finite as the two vans that sit in our parking lot here at the high school, going back to the dealership and looking at renegotiating leases, but as everything increasing costs. So to answer your question, we did not just say straight across the board, every department, every budget area gets a, the same increase. It was like this, based on our work as an administrative team to determine what the best cost per bank for our buck was and what may have to get eliminated or what has to get funded more.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think the point being, we can't just take that increase and, you know, apply it in a broad stroke. We have to drill in, and you guys do drill in, to the finite information as to where we need those increases to be taken care of. Uh, we take care of this district as a totality, not one individual or each set of individuals or, uh, item that needs expenditure. It's always weighed against each other as to importance for the best success of our students. Um, and I think there's some misunderstanding that I've heard rumblings in the community about this increase per student that we're receiving, and why doesn't that funding just go to, uh, item A or B versus how we've distributed across the board? So I just kind of wanted to highlight a little bit of that. I appreciate you. Ms. Altonorf didn't know I was going to do that. I don't think anyone else on the board was gonna, knew I was gonna kind of start going down that path, but I appreciate you taking the time, uh, as we continue to work on some of the misunderstandings of how this district's managed. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Locke?
I think the question is what percentage is, uh, state aid of our budget? Is it one-third or one-half, or what is the number?
The majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. I don't know the actual percentage of state aid. I do know, um, now that you referenced it, the increase in, in, is 4.9%. So when you said the 4.5, I remember that the increase is 4.9%. Don't know the dollar amount attached to that, though.
Right. I was thinking it was 4.8 for some reason, but we, we can go with 4.9. So the majority of our revenue is from local property taxes. So if the state aid went up by 4.9%, that means overall, our budget, we don't have an extra 4.9%. It's half of that or less than half of that number overall. That's the real question, and that's the answer.
Well, to put a finer point on that, Mike, I think that's a good point. The 4.9% increase is for one year on a two-year budget, so next year, our budget does not increase again by 4.9%.
Our budget does not increase in the biennial budget. They have an increase of the up to, there, there's two categories there. Everyone received a $325 per student increase, and then any school district that was below the $11,000 threshold still after receiving that 325 was brought up to the $1,000 mark. In the current biennial budget, because this was the first year, and next year is obviously the second year, um, there is a $325 increase again. What's happening the next biennial budget? We have seen biennial budgets that that 325 has been negative 250. So it's not that it always has increased. I mean, obviously, everything else is increasing. You're going to assume the state biennial budget will continue to give us more money, but it doesn't mean that it's going to happen. So yes, there will be, it will be through $11,325 per student next year.
Thank you.
Just one more key point in that. Uh, that did not keep pace with inflation.
No.
Or CPI.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. Thank you, Mrs. Altonorf. Moving on to item C, discussion and action to call a special meeting to approve resolution G4, 2023 Annual Meeting. Dr. Chris Ritter and Attorney Kevin Pollard.
Thank you. Yes, uh, District Legal Counsel Attorney Kevin Pollard is here tonight. Uh, the two of us wanted to discuss, um, what transpired on October 23rd at the annual meeting. Uh, resolution G4, or actually, I'm sorry, first, um, I wanted to put some clarity to what the annual meeting is and what it is not, so that we had a better understanding as that night, there were some discrepancies in, um, items brought forward during the annual meeting, as well as, um, some out-of-order voting that took place based on Robert's Rules of Order, and that's why tonight, uh, Mr. Pollard and I wanted to speak to specifically resolution G4. So the annual meeting has powers of authority, and this is also provided in the packet for reference under state statute, uh, 120.10, and what the annual meeting is. Obviously, we, uh, elect a chairperson. There's adjournment for, of, of the meeting. Salaries of board members can be voted upon at that time, reimbursement of the school board members, uh, when it comes to travel, determining building sites, real estate, taxes for sites, buildings and maintenance, um, tax for transportation vehicles, tax for operation, tax for debt. School debt service fund is also a power of the annual meeting, as well as capital, um, school capital expansion, tax for recreation authority, legal proceedings, textbooks, school lunches. And so as Ms. Altonorf just spoke in the, uh, past agenda item with discussion and action to approve the budget at the annual meeting, much of the information that came forward and was voted upon, most specifically our tax levy, was a, a main component. Um, that evening, we had many amendments that were brought forward, and obviously, the meeting was paused at one point due to the critical incident KMS. And, um, one area that Mr. Pollard and I would like to, um, provide clarity to tonight is after reviewing, um, internally, administratively, the video footage multiple times, and then asking an outside, uh, independent counsel to review, uh, item G4, which was school board member salaries. The first motion was brought forward, um, to keep salaries at the $5,480 that has been in place over the past few years with, along with reimbursement at the current IRS per-mile rate and any actual necessary expense, meal, lodging, et cetera, was brought forward. That motion, um, then was, a second motion was brought forward by an elector, and that motion was for the Germantown School Board, uh, to be. School Board to be compensated $8 per board meeting and $20 per hour for each committee meeting that they physically attend for both of those. And then that time sheets would be kept for record of that, as well as there would be no additional compensation for any training, travel expense. The travel expense reimbursement would need to be submitted to the electors for annual approval, the annual meeting, before any reimbursement was paid. During the meeting then, during that time, the motion one that was brought forward failed at a vote, and motion two, the amended, was approved, the amended motion was approved. But during that time, there was no final vote to actually vote on motion two. So as it stands, and Mr. Pollard would concur as legal representation, the current board compensation for the 23-24 school year is $0. We are already into the 23-24 school year, and compensation has been brought forward on the previous dollar amount. It's our recommendation to call a special meeting under the authority that the board has for, to reconvene around resolution G4, because when reading, going back and reading both motions, there was intent for compensation for the board. There was not a motion for non-compensation. And this evening, we'd like to, Mr. Pollard can answer any questions related to this and what that means, bringing forward based on Wisconsin State Statute 1208 Sub 2 ABC. You as the school board have the ability to call a special meeting regarding this resolution or any resolution that we would then have to follow procedure through two Class II notifications, just like we do for an annual meeting. And then again, we would follow the same Robert's Rules of Order when it comes to electing a chair and then proceeding through the meeting. The meeting would be publicly posted. It would be open for anyone that is of the electorate, a community member, taxpayer to vote, the same way we did that evening of the 23rd. We would just convene about around one, the specific resolution. So with that, any questions the board has? And if you want to act this evening, Mr. Pollard and I will try to answer those questions.
Yeah, I will say, I take responsibility for what happened that evening. We had an unusual situation with the annual meeting. It was not a typical, you know, what we were used to in the past. Annual meetings were a handful of people maybe show up. We had a group of people that had an agenda and were trying to get amendments passed, and I think we got a little flustered up here, myself included. And unfortunately, our policy expert and our rules of Roberts expert, Mr. Barney, wasn't here to keep us straight. So I kind of put things out of order on how we were going to pass that resolution. So we ended up not passing any resolution. So the meeting going forward that we're trying to schedule now would be to rectify that situation. So that's where we're at. But I take full responsibility for not following Roberts' rules.
Mr. Ebert?
Yeah, I don't think there was any intent.
No, exactly. I'm not saying I did.
I think certain-
We're human.
Yeah, I was sitting next to you when our superintendent whispered in her ear, potential incident that was occurring. Obviously, it was occurring. And our first reaction was the safety of this building to ensure, we don't know the scope of the situation. We weren't sure if we were going into a lockdown, a hold, district-wide, this building, that building, what. So a couple of things took place. I know Chris running off the stage to engage his staff, which did a fantastic job managing that situation. These doors were closed. At that time, we would not be in open. We'd be in violation of an open meeting. So to protect our electorate's rights, pause the meeting. And I think that happened fairly fluently because people understood what that meant when that happened. I had left the room at one point to make sure the exterior of the building was secured in this vicinity, as well as to confer with Mr. Reuter as to what was going on or going forward. If we had any further information, I know you remained here in control of what was the paused meeting at that time. When I returned into the room, some concerning things were happening within the electorate, yelling back and forth, accusations of the doors need to be opened. Well, that's why the meeting's paused, right? That's, so we'll open the doors and resume the meeting as soon as we know everyone's safe. I think it was one of our first, or at least mine, I won't speak for everybody else here, but that was mine. There were some accusations made, or I could hear rumblings of accusations being made. And understandably, not everyone had the full information at hand. None of us really did at that point. But as a board, I think we tried to push forward with the meeting as best as possible while tending to the safety of our students, our community members that were in another building. We resumed the meeting and continued to hear motions that were on the agenda with the intent to get to attend the safety of these individuals at this other building. I don't think there was intent, the intentional action from anyone on this board to deprive anyone of their civilian, their electorate right to be heard or vote in a manner which they chose. So I look at the recommendation to put this special meeting together as a way of ensuring, while we weren't able to do it that night, we are able to do it in the future and give our electorate a chance to be heard in its entirety. I think Dr. Reuter pointed out, the motions that were on were compensation-based. I don't think that's a priority, it's not a priority of mine for this board. I won't speak to the rest of you. I would assume it's not a large priority. But the electorate was looking for some form of compensation to be in place, and currently, there is none. That's my take on it. I think that's what we're getting at with this special meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's to safeguard the electorate's right in those motions that were brought forward.
The two motions, again, that were brought forward were both about compensation, and they provided a dollar amount. And the current dollar amount is zero because they were not. First one failed. Second one, the motion was approved, but the actual voting of the motion, correct, Mr. Pollard, was not-
That's correct. It was a motion to amend the original proposed resolution. The amendment to the motion was approved under parliamentary procedure, under Roberts' rules. Even though you have a motion to amend, you require them to present the motion as amended for a final vote, and that's what did not occur. And essentially, it's an irregularity under Roberts' rules, and there's plenty of guidance that says when such an irregularity occurs at an annual meeting, the proper course of action is to call a special meeting. That's in part what a special meeting is for.
And for clarity, too, it's not administration calling the special meeting. That's the power of the board. I think there's misconception based on communications that have been sent to me later this afternoon, this evening, that I'm calling a special meeting. I do not have the authority, just like this board meeting was called by you as the board. This is your meeting. I'm your advisor at this meeting.
And I think going back to his intent, we did have a vote, but we did not vote in the correct order. So we ended up not voting on the correct item to have an approval that evening. So that's the reason for trying to schedule an additional meeting now.
But I could also point out, in the annual meeting, this board is not a board of education at that point. When we're in the annual meeting, we're electorates and hold any of the power that any other electorate would have at that time. So typically, it seems this board is, this electorate has appointed the president of the board to help run that meeting. That's what happened that night. But as far as ensuring all the electorate rights are adhered to as a community and electorate, that is our responsibility, meaning the community, not just the members of this board.
Correct. Okay.
We did discuss internally, based on statutory timelines for posting, and Ms. Alton Dorf, the date that would make the most sense so that we can get the publication in local media was December.
Right. The earliest date we could have a meeting would be December 11th.
Anyone else?
I think this evening, it's not about setting a specific date, correct? It's just approving a special meeting. And then, am I correct on that, Mr. Pollard?
That's correct. The board may move to call a special meeting for the purpose of considering and acting upon proposed resolution G4. If we can schedule a date, I think we should.
I mean, December 11th, to keep this separate from our December 18th board meeting would be feasible. And it would, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that if we do decide December 11th, I would have to send it to the newspaper tomorrow. So, which I am able to do, I just want to make sure that everyone's calendar would say December 11th would work. Otherwise, we'd have to push it because I don't want to miss my deadline for tomorrow.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday evening.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion pursuant with Wisconsin State Statute 12008 Sub 2 Sub A Sub B Sub C to call a special meeting to reconvene to consider the act upon resolution G4 of the October 23rd, 2023 Germantown School District Annual Meeting. Approve salaries and expense reimbursement for school board, for school board members.
Do I add the date?
Do we need the date? For December 11th.
We don't need a date and an approval. I just want to, I'm just going to post it tomorrow in the newspaper.
Okay. That works.
One second.
Let's take him off with the second. Any further discussion?
Were there any other, I'm sorry.
I was. I was just going to mention, for a regular board meeting like this evening, if we have an amended motion, the voting on that can be a little confusing for the board on any given evening. And that was a particularly hectic night with all the various amended amendments to the motions that were coming in. So to put it another way, as far as G4 went, there was no reason to amend it if it was going to be voted down anyway. And that's what happened. It got voted down. So I think, I didn't see it coming, that it was going to be voted down. But you know, hindsight is 2020. We could have explained that, look, it's been amended, the motion has been amended. So the original motion, it's been amended. It must be approved now, or the board pay will be zero. I really didn't see it coming until I talked to Tom. And even then, after the fact, I had to think about it for a while. And I said, you know, Tom is right. The board, it, board pay is zero at this point in time. So yeah, it gets tough. You vote on the amended motion, and then you vote on the motion. That's the way to do it. And I think we've come close to, not necessarily this board, but boards in the past, we had somebody, you know, kind of watching the i's and t's. And a lot of times, that was Lester Spees in the past and, you know, previous board member. And he would keep things straight. So I think that's been transferred to Tom now. But that said, I hope that, I hope that explains that I've explained it to a number of citizens since then. And I hope that I got the job done, you know, decently and in simple terms that anybody can understand, including myself.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, you're good.
You're good? Okay. All right. Hearing no one else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851G to confer with the board's legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. Complaint filed by Attorney Elizabeth Lambert in September 2023. And number two, 19.851E to deliberate and negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of district funds, or to conduct other board business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, discussion, negotiations for certified staff.
Motion as stated.
Second.
Mr. Ebert and Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Will call?
Medvin?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Pagan Botham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 8:45. Thank you all for coming. I'm sorry, closed session at 8:45. Thank you, Tom. Everyone drive safely. Thank you all for coming.